What session is all? Okay, so this is the December with at 6:01.
Sorry, I muted myself there. I can't I can't hear you guys. It's a little it's a little garbled, but you're there.
Mark, can you try again?
Hey, there we go. Yeah, that's much better.
All right. And you can hear us, Mark?
I can hear you good now. Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Mayor and City Council, Mark from Holst is here this evening to talk about the staffing analysis that is in your packet that translated into a recommendation for targeted square footage. And he's here to answer questions. We are here to answer questions about what went into that analysis. And then he's also provided, should council choose to continue down his path and proceed of what the costs associated with those next steps would be. And we're also here to Mark's primarily here to answer questions. Mark, do you want to start with the staffing analysis?
Yeah, sure. That's fine. I was actually having our principal Kevin Volk join us. It looks like he's having problems joining the meeting. But I'll just go ahead and get started on this. He'll probably jump in here in a minute and interrupt me saying, oh, you're doing it wrong, Mark. But all right, here, we're going to jump into. Hold on just a second. Okay. You guys mind if I share my screen? Oh, there's Kevin.
Okay, you should be able to share your screen now if you'd like.
Okay, perfect. Actually, I'm gonna make Kevin, are you able to share? Actually, I can. How about I do that? Does that sound good?
Sure. Apologize. Apologies. It's always the last minute internet problem right before a meeting.
Kevin, do you want to introduce yourself to this council?
Oh, sure. Yeah, my name's Kevin Volk. One of the principals at Holst. I'm also the design director. So I've been working with Mark for a while here on this. In fact, was involved previously, just was kind of behind the scenes and then had some availability over the last couple of months. So kind of was able to get back involved and and help with the space needs study.
Thanks, Kevin. All right. So let me know if you guys can see that. Should be pulled up full screen for you.
We can see it.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. Well, thanks a lot for having us back here this evening. At our last session that we attended, we all discussed what was the appropriate path to move forward for this project. After it was determined that that council did want to proceed with looking forward on this civic project for civic building. And so what what we proposed doing was a space needs analysis, which is essentially, you know, in a span of five, 10, 25, and 30 years from now, how does this building respond size wise as the city grows based on population, based on staffing needs. And so what we had to do is kind of set out essentially a different plan of attack than what we had looked at previously under our own, under our previous design package for the design development stage. What what we're going to show you tonight is essentially the results from that analysis based on those population estimates and also based on, you know, current staffing. What we did is Kevin will kind of walk through this, but we went through and had a had a little bit of a survey done to figure out, you know, exactly based on these certain metrics, how the city would respond by staffing certain departments and and whether there are new departments that may join in the future or not. So I'm just gonna go ahead and and kind of walk you guys through this, the space needs report, if that's fine. Kevin, do you want to? Let's see here. There we go. This is the summary page. I'm not sure if you guys have all had a chance to read through the package yet. But the summary page essentially describes what what the goal of this package is. So I'll hand it over to Kevin from here.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, so as Mark mentioned, narrative is a bit of a summary, but it also includes a couple things in their conclusion and next steps that although we'll get more into it's, I think, helpful knowing sort of where the target is at the beginning. So after we went through the assessment and Shannon helped us talk to staff and try to understand some projected growth within the different departments. It was determined that although we had provided for some growth in the what I'll call the current design, which is the 50% DD in what is referred to as scheme one in this package, it had some growth for staff, but not as much as we were talking in the space needs report for 30 years. But we see the site as being as having that the potential to achieve those those needs for that. So that's really what this study has come down to, how how best to achieve that and to get to the numbers that we're talking and in part of it is a bit of a puzzle, right? Like, I think when we get to this stage and we understand what targets are, we also then try to start understanding how how we achieve those targets. And with this type of building where we have, you know, varied program with its own with each with their own needs and their own locations in the building and access, etc., it starts, one, it starts impacting the other. So we'll see and we'll talk about in the schemes in particular, how how some of those things come into play. But when we are trying to create, you know, a simple building that is efficient and economical, sometimes there means that there's more area than actually you need. And it's a little bit counterintuitive, but in order to make a simplified building that stacks nicely and neatly and and has the appearance that we're looking for, sometimes there's there's an inflation. So we'll walk through quickly how we got to the numbers that we got to, and then we'll kind of talk about the schemes themselves. Feel free to interrupt if there's questions as we go. You know, we're happy to answer as we go. I'm sure there'll be time as well at the end, but happy to be interrupted. So as far as what we're hoping to get out of this, there's a few sort of goals. And one is trying to land on what might be a target square footage. And I think that there's some variables within that. And then also what that means as far as contract and fee goes, and Mark will talk about more of that after we go through this process. So, okay, Mark, if you want to keep going to the next page. So this is the the chart we put together for the staffing estimate. On the upper left, you can see the population numbers and the growth percentages over the next five to 30 years that are targets. And then what we did with that was then break out the current staff and the current departments into what we saw as the growth for the for the course of that population growth. And again, this was. Yeah, go ahead.
Where did you get your your data for the growth of the population?
We took the population number for, well, the current one, obviously, is the current 2220. The other five, 10 years, those are somewhat industry standards as far as typical population growth. And we've seen it as well. We had a study that was done for the city of Florence. They use similar numbers. There are some factors that, you know, could impact that change, large changes in zoning, other things that maybe were, we might not be aware of, but we felt like that was a a comfortable starting point for the population growth. And then that is what was used by staff to target their growth, the growth of the staff themselves over those years.
Would you say are you on the lean side or the heavy side on all your numbers?
I think that we're, that's a good question. I think when we're talking about the growth of staff, I think that we're probably in leaning towards the heavier side, though not significantly. And I think that somewhat depends on departments. And one of the things that we noted here, which was potential future staff needs. And so in the blue at the bottom, there's staff that don't currently exist, and we see the potential for growth. And this, again, was a conversation with Shannon and and the current staff about what that might be. There's some things that we kept out of there. And we don't, we didn't put into the mix. And I think that if we had, I think we would have been really fat in the growth. And some of those were, you know, attorney, having on staff, some of that was your own planning department and bringing that back into the to the city staff. So we kept those out. And so you know, I think we're in a pretty good point for the staff growth. I think as far as square footage growth goes, I think in the schemes that will show, you'll see a skinny scheme and a fat scheme. And I think that there's reasons for that. And that's, I think, what we want to talk about tonight. And I think that they're all, I do think that the skinny is very achievable without a lot of compromise as far as space. The more compromises about locations and sort of organization of building and less about how much square footage or how many desks there are, if that makes sense.
And that number, this 4,400 is kind of a middle of the road number for actual population. I mean, are you on the heavy side for population growth or the lean side for population growth?
I think we're probably more towards the lean side. I think in a you know, in a population like yours, some changes, especially two things like the zoning that allows for more developed, more density and and bigger development could have a bigger impact on that. But those right now have not, we haven't put those into play.
Thank you, Mary. From or PSU studying how this compares, how the population compares with their estimates. Portland State University gets all the good ones for the school district.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to remember, this this seems to be pretty close in line to what PSU.
Yes. From the last population study from Portland State, it's a little higher than they've projected. But that's because we've grown some significantly with our new yeah, divisions. Yep. Yeah.
I do think, I do think that although his population is an indicator, I think of what your city civic hall needs would be, I think that comes down to more about the community room, and you'll see options for that and less about maybe the the number of staff, just because you already the you know, the amount of staff can handle a fairly big increase without, you know, doubling or tripling. I think we're showing what is essentially a doubling of staff over 30 years. But if we look at that, it's not a doubling of square footage size of the building, because there's a lot of things that didn't need to double in size. Some needed to get bigger, and we needed more offices and a couple more restrooms and another stair and some things like that. But but the but the sort of the same percentage of growth isn't seen necessarily in the building. So I do think that what we're looking at here, when we get to, if we look at the 30 year growth up to a staff of 20 and a half, 21 across the different areas of the building is a pretty, it's a pretty good sized staff, to be honest, even for 4,400 person population or or bigger. So.
Yeah, and I think we also do want to point out kind of where the growth occurs. You know, you're seeing probably the largest number of growth in your police department, right? So the previous study that we did, we included space for for three officers, because that was essentially what was current. And the previous targets were really based on, you know, what what was realistic for that time, right? Obviously, we were we were designing to a budget and trying to try to whittle down as much square footage as possible to be able to afford the project. But when we project out to 30 years, if you do get population growth up to double your your population, you know, your police department, obviously, is going to have to flex to fit that. So you're seeing some some impact because of departments like that. And we also have, you know, code enforcement and community service as 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 space for growth as well that we were not including in the previous or the, what we actually are calling now the current design, 100% DD design, the latest where we last left off. Why don't we go ahead and go to the next slide here?
So this then takes those numbers and puts them into in what's tries to be a comparison, but be honest, is a little bit difficult with the size of the current facilities. Just because of how I think it's used. But what you're seeing is the estimated staffing over the course of the growth percentage increase of that staffing, the then relative increase in square footage and associated with that, based on you know, what we're adding and where we're having to grow. And then in the final, the final column is really a sort of square foot per person. If we take out the community room, because that seems to sort of affect the number quite a bit. But as you can see, the larger you get of a building, the less square foot per person, because you're spreading some of the square footage over more occupants or more staff. So this is really about, you know, showing that in that target, we're getting down to about 500 square foot per staff, which is a pretty, pretty good number that takes into account, obviously, a lot of areas that aren't used by staff regularly, whether that be the circulation space of stairs and storage and utility spaces, everything, not just the the office space itself. So. And I think that that was that was to be expected, the drop. Pretty significant drop, I think, from what the current design is at the 9764 square footage down to the 127 number. But I think that, again, comes into there's not significantly more space in certain areas like the pre-function space and storage and things like that than there was before. So that's why it drops.
Are you guys able to see my cursor by any chance?
We are.
Okay, perfect. So the 4,728 includes the building you're in now and the the building the police station currently occupies. So now it's like, where did that number come from? But that is that really is the building that you guys are in, as is right now. And then the next number down, this 9,700 is what we realistically were designing for in in our previous phase, which which we've been calling current. So we'll show that on the next few pages here.
Yeah, and I do clarify, I do think that square foot per staff on that one's a little deceiving, because there's three, believe there's over 3,000 square foot just in the police station. You know, as opposed to the 1,700 in the the city hall building. So the the sort of proportions of size to staff are maybe not split the same way as we would expect in the future. Okay, so we're going to go through the four schemes. And the first scheme is where we sort of landed at the end of the DD phase previously. So just to, this is more as a refresher, but it's back from May of 2020. We landed with, you know, a two-story city hall side of the building and a one-story public safety side with the outdoor courtyard fronting Main Street and the building sort of separated along the north-south axis and in pretty distinguishable between the two sides of the building. Mark, if we keep going. And here are those more developed plans. And we don't have this level of development for the new plans, obviously. But you're going to see that we tried to sort of bring this one back so we could compare a little bit easier. But in here, you know, we had 9764. It was about a one-third, two-thirds for the the public safety side was about a third of that, while the city hall side was about two-thirds of that. And city hall side included the community room, the ground floor pre-function, admin billing, everything essentially in the yellow, green, blue. And then and the public safety was all in the pink. Keep going, Mark. And so this is just a quick view. So we understand massing wise, you know, I think we all know what that looked like. But the pink building, pink side was the public safety as one story and then two stories on the east side. And I know that, you know, we've been talking about how to how to balance that and how to provide a two-story building across the the site. So if we keep going to propose scheme two, and so we looked at each of these schemes in a similar way. And at the end, there's a comparison page where we can see all these side by side with the numbers side by side. And so this also addresses, I think, a couple of the questions that are still on the table. The existing building next door, does that stay or does that become future parking? I think as we talk about these schemes more, there's one in particular that works a lot better with that being future parking. And I think it's a fairly big decision to be made and not necessarily a decision that needs to be made today, but I think it's a decision that needs to be made as we move forward and especially as we get into a work session that, you know, we we hope we get to come January. But could potentially have big, bigger impacts than maybe what we're seeing here, not necessarily in a square footage allotment or anything like that, but just in a overall site organization and connectivity to the surroundings. But as far as square footage goes, I think, I think we're, all of these are going to work regardless. So this one is what we saw as is getting us really as close to that target of 2007 as we had shown on the on the previous pages. What this does is it puts the public safety on a two-story portion of the building on the west side and then allows the east side to be community room, admin billing and city hall offices over two stories as well. Not a dramatic change to the organization of the building than we had previously proposed, except for obviously, the public safety is a two-story. We think that there's a pretty clean break on what can go upstairs and what needs to be downstairs for that program of the building. And so this, and it's almost an even break of 50/50 of the those areas of that portion of the building. What you can see here is on the backside, that portion of the building is shorter than the city hall side of the building. And you know, and Shannon can can, you know, tell you that at one point, we actually had that on the front side of the building on Main Street and you know, and we pushed it to the back because we know that there's this desire to have a fairly sort of symmetrical, uniform building across Main Street and have that presence on the street. But the needs for that side of the building are different as far as overall square footage and how those things balance. So this one, this one shows what we think is is about as small as we can get and as compact and as economical of a layout as we can get. I think there's some questions as far as where some things go, but this is really intended to be very sort of schematic. Can we get the square footage that we think? How how do those things stack when we do? And as you can see, we're slightly above that 127 number that we had targeted. And that's really about how things stack. And, you know, we might need slightly less square footage on one floor than the other, but to line up walls and stack them properly. That's where we get. And I think it's a, it shows us that we can get to the target. And it shows us, you know, how we can do it over the footprint that we have. So I think that's a a good first step. Go ahead. Sorry, we couldn't hear that. We couldn't hear that too well. But I think there was a question about the retail space that had been involved before.
And whether the decision had been made to eliminate it. So.
Okay, that was our understanding. Okay. Okay. So, Mark, if we keep going, scheme three. So scheme three provides for a bigger building. Obviously, it's about 800 square feet larger than scheme two. And that primarily comes into play with the sort of symmetrical nature of the building, to be honest. It allows for the the west side of the building to be the same depth as the east side of the building. And so that there's no step on the back. It's a fairly clean and tidy building. Less surface area of exterior wall, to be honest. But I think it allows for a little bit more growth, but potentially more than you currently need. It does keep the the basic organization the same from scheme two. It allows for a little bit more flexibility, I think, and slightly larger community room. And in city hall offices, because that side of the building got slightly larger. And the other thing it does is provide for a larger lobby gallery pre-function space. And so you know, it gets 800 square foot bigger, but you know, a bunch of that sort of comes into play in the lobby space itself. And so the ground floor of that lobby space gets wider. So it went from 12 feet to 17 feet. So over the course of 76 feet of length, that extra five feet is a good portion of that 800 square feet of additional space. But the general organization doesn't change. So.
Yeah. So it seems like the community room is the same size and the offices are the same size as well. Doesn't seem like it changed anything. The only thing that changed that I see is the public safety that keeps getting bigger.
Correct. The public safety got bigger. And then, like I said, the lobby gallery pre-function space in the center got wider. So it went from 12 feet to 17 feet. So it's, there's more public space there.
We got another scheme for you, too.
Yep. So in in scheme four, again, slightly larger. This one does something more than simply make the pre-function space bigger. In fact, the pre-function space went back and got smaller down to the 12 foot wide instead of the 17. And then that square footage went into the spaces to the sides. But it's again, it's the same 76 foot deep building equal across the whole facades, front and back. But what it does do is it moves the admin billing to the front Main Street side of the of the of the site. And I think the big question or one of the big points of this is the parking scenario situation. So if the existing building goes away and public parking goes to the west side of the the project and in the north side is strictly police parking, then the location of admin billing really wants to move to that front corner. The community room also gets bigger in this scheme, significantly bigger, in fact, and fits quite a few few more people in there. The city hall offices stay relatively the same. Some of the stairs, elevators sort of move around. And it's just, that's really just about sort of moving square footage. I do think in this scheme there is public safety, especially on the second floor, is larger than is needed from from what, you know, we sort of from from what, you know, we sort of assessed. But I think that there's things that we could do with that now. I think the big question then becomes, and I think that this is a question we still had even after this study, which was, well, can we, can we move the admin billing down to this bottom corner closer to Main Street? And while getting down closer to our twelve thousand seven hundred square feet. And the question or the answer to that is probably. And I say that because the reality is, is we need to get into the detail of laying out the spaces to understand how they then fit into these envelopes to determine exactly how far we can get. I think we can get it down. I don't know if we can get it to twelve seven. But I feel fairly confident we could get it to the twelve. I feel confident we can get it below thirteen. To be honest with you, once we lay out those spaces. But until we can do that and really sort of get into how much space, you know, should an office have the six, you know, police, the police officer locations, some of the compromises we had made before, potentially going back on and providing a little bit more of a, you know, of a work area in that space that we had kind of lost and even potentially a little kitchenette. Like, there's a lot of things like that that are get into the detail of how this the space lays out. But I think the biggest question regarding this point, this option isn't so much that it's the largest. I think that it is, and it's conservatively the largest to try to keep some of the other things the same, but then try to fit, you know, take one section of the admin billing and move it to the other side and then you know, make community room bigger. The whole building gets a little bit larger with that. I do think it can shrink. I feel confident in that. The parking location becomes a really big question about, does admin billing need to be over on this corner on this side of the building? And not so, you know, not there not be the clean separation of public safety on the west side and you know, city civic hall on the right side or or east side of the of the corridor lobby pre-function space and in the impacts that has when you're trying to stack things. So if we keep going, Mark, I think you'll see that we've got the comparison page and you can kind of see the numbers across and how they get bigger. And public safety, as was mentioned, gets larger in each of these schemes. And in one of the reasons for that is simply how to keep that, you know, stacking and keep the program, what can go upstairs and down. Now, some of the assumptions we've made, you know, might be able to be questioned more and that might help us balance some of the square footages. So we don't have access in other areas. But you can also see the growth of the community room. So currently current design had it at fifteen hundred, and I think it was really just under a hundred people. We got it up to in schemes two and three, twenty-one ninety, which would allow just over a hundred people. And then in in, to be fair, community room also includes the kitchen and some of the storage that goes with that. So it's not just the space for the people, but it's some of the the adjacent program that goes with it. And then in the fourth scheme, it gets really large. Mostly because when we move admin billing, there's a big chunk of space. And so we could provide that into the community room and have hundred and sixty people over there in that space. But it's again, depends on some of the proximity of of other of other program and its importance. And so some of those questions can't necessarily be answered until we get into more detail and we understand how the things lay out and we add the additional offices and some of the additional desks and and we compare some of the square footages that we've had in a little bit more detail and and see how we can tighten things up circulation wise and etc. But the other thing that this comparison shows, and I and I believe some of our, one of our numbers on each of the the bottom portion, which is the cost per square foot are actually didn't get updated on schemes three and four. The the overall cost is the same, but it, what that's trying to show is if we have a budget of five million dollars and we have the total gross square foot that's shown at the top, what that allows us as a cost per square foot. And to be honest, the three ninety-two being the highest cost per square foot is gives us gets us closest to where we were before as far as the budget and and the pricing that had been done. Now, things have changed in the last few years, of course. I think that scheme for being the biggest scheme and with five million dollars is a bit of a stretch to try to get down to a building that only costs three hundred and sixty-two dollars a square foot. And so although the program might need to move similar to scheme for, I truly think that we need to be targeting this total square footage closer to what's in scheme two. But again, that's going to take getting into the detail and getting into the work session and getting everybody to understand what that provides for the different departments. And in getting everybody on the same page about that.
My concerns about the public safety, you know, I I personally dislike that keeps getting bigger. In each one, I'd rather have more staff and community room than public safety. I think that's the main goal of this building and the survey. People wanted to have a community space. Not have more public safety space. I think we are. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need as much as we are seeing in there, especially the growth there.
Yeah, I think we would agree with you that, you know, with these, these four schemes, we know scheme one is out of date and inadequate for growth. Schemes two, three and four really show you different options that you can choose from. And the reality is, we feel really comfortable with scheme two in the size of the public safety component of it. We feel like we can probably accommodate some of the qualities of scheme four in scheme two. Again, we need to get into all the details of that. But just because, you know, you're seeing a particular layout tonight, really what we're trying to identify is what is our target square footage for this building? What is absolutely minimum, like the absolute minimum that you can build this building and still feel comfortable and confident in the growth for thirty years? And what we feel like after looking at all these, yes, if there's, there's some redundancies, maybe there's some spaces in the building that are a little bit larger than unnecessary in schemes three and four, but scheme two at that twelve thousand seven hundred really gets you that ideal target for not just the building that really works between now for five and ten years. But it's something that, you know, the city isn't going to have to go into and retrofit or add on in in the near future for for quite some time, if ever. Especially if the adjacent building with essentially where the police station is right now. One of the, one of the hopes that we can get at it tonight and and obviously, you know, not expecting a decision, but is some discussion to happen around the parking lot. And that really shapes how that building addresses Main Street, addresses the rest of downtown Carlton. We know that there's been a lot of concerns on how the exterior of the building looks, how how the windows look. Are they connected to the look of downtown? Is there any way for us to provide a more open and appealing facade to the building? And I think one of the, one of the major factors is going to be can we see that corner of the building? And I'm going to go back to that. Oops. That side here really quick. If you're looking from downtown, are you seeing this corner of the building? Or is there another building that's always going to be there? It kind of fundamentally changes how how we want to approach the the ground floor and how the city wants to interact with this with this building.
I think one of the points that that comes up with that, and and I don't think I mentioned it, but when we split the public safety side into two components, in the upstairs and the downstairs, most of what state needs to stay downstairs, at least from what we could tell, evidence rooms, interview rooms, locker rooms are all windowless rooms. And so what this scheme, and again, not necessarily the size, but the location of program allows is getting some program on the on the street that allows for windows. If we, if we don't mix program there, then we're going to have a hard time on that ground floor on the west side of the building, whether there's you know, parking lot or not next to it, because nothing down there really allows for windows within it. So that's all part of the the conversation that needs to be had, I think, in the, as we go through the work. The work session, but that is some of the realities of of how that program splits now between you you've mentioned the growth of public safety, and that's not what people want to see. And I, I understand that and I and I hear you. I think the only in schemes three and four, it's getting bigger for reasons not because of what it provides or what it's providing, but just because of of the building and the nature of of stacking things. In scheme two, it gets slightly bigger than what we currently have to allow for the growth that's expected and that wasn't accounted for before. And provides some of the things that they probably really need to function that were they were sort of had gotten whittled so far down in the previous scheme that, you know, there was six, six desks in a in a area that should have probably accounted for four and it didn't have an area to do printing, copying and or a kitchenette. Now, some of those things, I think, are questions, you know, about how that needs to function. And maybe they don't need those things and the square footage can can go back down and that'd be great. But with this with this assessment, I think we felt it important to say, okay, what are the some of the things that got compromised before? And what are the numbers associated with getting that back? And it not to make grand offices for anybody, but to provide some sort of basic needs of how an office needs to function, no matter regardless of whether it's the police department or the or the city hall. And providing the the proper space for that.
You're saying that game one doesn't work because of our growth potential?
Correct.
Yeah. So this, if if we kind of go back, I can, I can circle back here in a minute, but you know, the the previous slides really show what the potential growth factors were. And this ninety-seven sixty-four fit perfectly for a ten-year growth pattern, which fit pretty much what we were designing for last time, albeit we were man, I want to say we had to shrink this down a little bit. As we, as we got closer and we got budget numbers back because of just cost per square foot and the natures of it, we had to really push the public safety side down as much as we possibly could. And the reality is, is what we're providing in the new building in the in this scheme that you're looking at right now, scheme one is very similar to what they're currently in right now. It's it's kind of like a a one for one, right? So it really doesn't provide a whole lot of future growth capability. It's it's adequately sized for for now, and that was essentially where we had to leave it because we we just couldn't magically make the building bigger for 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 no cost. And so what we're doing now in these in these newer schemes is actually showing how does the building respond to that future growth, right? And and essentially with the, with the intent and the acknowledgement that we realized the previous scheme had a facade that was not preferred amongst council and amongst public perception. And so one of the factors that we wanted to bring back and we proposed was allowing for a two-story frontage along Main Street so that it it matched the character of downtown Carlton.
Well, number one, like you're saying, doesn't, it's ten years and that did.
Yep, exactly.
Number one, we should just erase it altogether. There's no, we no need even talking about it because it's too small for the thirty-year growth. So now we go to the number two. And that's eighty or sixty-five square feet over or what you propose as a market target size. So that building seems to fit for the thirty-year growth, right? Is that correct what I'm hearing?
Correct.
And the number three and number four are just more extravagant because we want a few bells and whistles on those. So I think we need to get back down to the twelve, twelve seventy-six, whatever that building size. And tweak it around to make it fall into place. You know, we have to shrink the community room. Okay, so let's shrink the community room a little bit. If we need more public safety side, I mean, we keep getting proposals for bigger and bigger and bigger over our target size. So we're already thirty years at twelve seventy-six. So why aren't we kind of focusing on that and not going to this thirteen or thirteen and fifteen? I mean, that's way over the bar.
I think we need a little bit of options right now.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that they're targets. They're they're really just options to show you, you know, the building, the building increases by what, thousand square feet? In option four at the most. And it's, you know, we definitely don't want to press you into a specific scheme over the other. We wanted to show you that 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 scheme two works, right? It's a, it's a scheme that we can fit the thirty-year growth within this floor plate. It's easier in a bigger building for sure. And that's why we're showing it. You know, it provides for more flexibility, but scheme two definitely will work.
Right in the public safety, it's more of a functionality question. And I know you you know, you're obviously more into this with more detail, but where are you proposing that our officers bring suspects and witnesses into the facility safely from the car to the facility? And where are you proposing that coming to this room or suspect, it's going to be, you know, all that security type that I'm just trying to give my head around that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking. You know, we we we're still going to have a similar approach that we did last time, which is, and I'm, I'm going to go back to the previous plans just because they address this concern. So in the previous plans, you you remember the north parking lot had a secured component of it as well as public parking. And I and I apologize, I haven't been out to the city of Carlton in the last few months, so I don't know if that parking lot has been completed. But essentially, half of the parking lot was secured and fenced off and police would enter that through a secure gate. Suspects would come in through this back door and go through processing. So there was a complete secure entry to the police side when it needed to be in use. Public access to the police side previously and similarly now would be through the front main entrance, check in with reception and billing and then go through and be and be buzzed into the the public safety side. In our new schemes and scheme two, it's going to be a similar, it's going to be a similar effort. Essentially, you're going to have whether the entire north parking lot gets turned into the public safety parking, you might have an entirely secure parking lot to the north. I don't, we don't want to make an assumption on that right now. But the access to the public safety component would still be from the north and on the ground floor. And it's kind of kind of speaking to what Kevin mentioned is is all the program on the ground floor is is is, you know, a part of that processing that is required. I'm sorry.
I have a question, Mark, in regards to parking. Kind of a concern to me on all the building schemes, they're all the same length. But on one scheme, it says, I think it's scheme four, the private parking versus the other ones say parking. Is that just a typo? I guess my question is, obviously, with being a city hall, there'll be a needed number of parking spaces for the public plus staff. How do we see that the the building, the existing building that's shown on here as future parking? Would that need to happen regardless of any scheme we 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 chose?
No. What what I was showing was the only place I I called out private parking was in scheme four, where we made an assumption on scheme four that the existing, I think it's maybe in the Axon that shows the private parking. Yeah. So in this scheme, we assumed that the the existing building next door would go away. And then therefore there would be public parking, which would be the future parking on the west side of the building. And then the entire parking lot to the north would go private police parking. And so that was.
And the follow-up on that, I guess, I, I just was looking for a little clarification. If they're all the same length, why would that one scheme need posed for that building to be torn down for parking first of all?
It, it doesn't have to be. It was just, it's, it's been one of the questions that's like, okay, is a building coming down or not? And without that, there are a lot of options that come into play. In this scheme, we moved the admin billing to that, to Main Street, to that southwest corner. And so we'd only really proposed moving that piece of program to the southwest corner if that was gonna be parking next door. If the majority, if the majority of public parking is gonna stay on the north side of the building, then that should stay over on that north side because people can come in and out and be out real quick. But you don't want people to park over in the southwest, on the west side of the building and then have to all walk all the way through the building and up to the other corner to get there and, and vice versa. So that's, that's why that was, and I apologize, it wasn't clear enough. But that, that was the thinking, so.
Something in all the iterations of the process that we've gone through, you don't understand anything that that existing building we're talking about, the intention was to tear it down.
Yeah, that was my assumption too, is that that would go away.
And that was a question that was coming up as we went through this process of what was that historical decision? Which is why, although you're right, I'm looking for it and it says private parking, you will notice on some of the other ones, it says future parking slash existing building on some of the other schemes. And so that, that was something I asked them to put in as a consideration because we weren't quite sure where that decision was.
I did want to be clear that the parking lot to the north and the potential parking lot to the west are not covered under the scope of what we're designing. We've been, you know, in our previous efforts, the city engineer Gordon Monroe has been taking the lead on designing those spaces. Right at the very end, right prior to the project going on hold, was the first time that we had heard about the potential for that building to go away. So we had never taken a pass at designing or redesigning the building and addressing that as a parking lot. And that's kind of one of the things you're seeing in this effort here is in this last scheme, you know, a way for us to address that as a parking lot rather than having, assuming that there's an, an existing building there that the realities of how do we address that with, from a window perspective, from a public perception and just from an, from an ease and access of use. So all that to say, the parking lots can, can really, whether it's public or private on the north and, and, and depending upon what it may be on, on the west as well. I think that, you know, the building can flex, kind of going back to our earlier discussion on the, the scheme two size, twelve thousand seven hundred square feet, to really match what the needs are there. But I think in order for us to really move forward with one of these schemes, I think that's a pretty critical decision that I don't know to date that we've felt like was documented. And if that is the case, that's great. Then we could move forward with, with assuming that building's gone. But we, we definitely didn't want to proceed without confirmation on that.
So just for the argument, if that building were to stay there, what's the, the we need the big building and the proposed public safety building?
Sorry. Can you? Can you repeat that?
Just for the argument, if that existing building were to stay, what, what is the setback between that building and the public safety building?
Oh, the separation between the two. Uh, good question. See if I have it noted on here. I don't think I do. I believe somewhere around a couple of feet. It's not much. It's not much building separation between the two.
Yeah, that's not enough for a path. It's really about seismic forces and, and movement of buildings. So you, you, you'd essentially be as close as you could get to it.
Yep.
Eight feet, ten feet?
No, 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 no.
This space right here is, is very, very, very small. And to be, to be quite honest, when we looked at the previous designs with a contractor, they had a lot of concerns about how this wall would be built adjacent to, you know, an existing building. It, it creates a, an issue for waterproofing. So to be quite honest, if this building goes away, that, the building from that side becomes much easier to build. A contractor always loves space to be able to, to build walls.
I mean, it's, to me, if that building were to stay, it puts a lot of limitations on, on the west side of the building, just aesthetically how it appears at the old ugly building right next door.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yep.
I'm thinking there probably about as much room as there is between bakery and the building to it, at least.
Isn't even that? About eight, five, five foot or less between the bakery and the old building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, what we've, what we've drawn right in this plan and in all the plans is, I mean, we're talking less than a foot and it's really about movement of building. It's not about a pass-through for anybody to travel or anything like that. And, and although it is difficult to waterproof, it's not impossible. We've done it plenty of times. And it was about using, you know, the, the space we had to get in particular, that public safety side and a single story before, so.
So we need to wrap this up. We're getting up to meeting time. So the decision that we need to make right now is we can talk about it as a regular session about whether or not and given those proceedings about the estimated square footage we want folks to start working in. About a sales generated work session, what would be done between now and that one session, what purpose that work session is. And the necessary people to use this as a work forward. So we can adjust that. So, thank you guys.
Of course.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the, the opportunity.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Well, don't go anywhere. You're outside seven too. We'll be back.
We expect to see you shortly.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting. The meeting of the work session is then at and okay, we will begin. Thank you. Hey, who's doing this? We'll call this meeting to order. So, Judy Grill called. Okay, so roll call. Marilyn Watkins.
Here.
Council President Charlie Ward-Mullin.
Here.
Councilwoman Heather Skipper.
Here.
Councilwoman Diana Rundell.
Here.
Councilwoman Erin Erickson.
Here.
Councilwoman Jamie Edlund. And everybody, everybody. All right, all time president and governor board. Thank you. Please join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance. And what allegiance do you have in the United States of America? And in the republic of America? Are there any changes or additions to the minutes?
Yes, there will be two additional dates to the update under five states. And there will also be a customer helping customers added to the two additional updates, item five state. Oh, the memory of the podium. Okay, ceremonies, appointments and announcements. First one up is for the planning commission. Anthony Stewart has been on the planning commission for the last several years. He, his appointment is up this year and he would like to have an interest that he would like to continue serving on the planning commission. Anthony's been serving as the chair of the planning commission and it would be.
I make a motion to reappoint Anthony Stewart to the planning commission in a second four-year term expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Good thing, most of the party. Thank you.
There we have a Carlton light parade update. This is a first-time event that occurred this past Sunday. And we do have Jamie, I apologize, Jamie, I'm probably mispronouncing your name. I apologize for that. But we do have her here to give a brief update about what that entailed and she and I and Chief Martinez also met today to talk about future events and what we would do in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So I don't know if you have any specific questions or if you'd like me to just go through what we spoke about today. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yeah. Why don't you go ahead and give a brief overview, Jen?
Okay. And so this Sunday, so the day after the tree lighting, we assembled behind the Kenwright Cellars train depot with the intent of having a little bike light parade. So for the past few weeks, we've been giving out lights that people could decorate, you know, kids and adults both their bikes. And in exchange for a non-perishable food donation. So early on, you know, we didn't have a lot of people coming in to get lights. And so I was thinking we probably wouldn't have a great showing and that we would have a bunch of lights left over. But as the weeks went by, I mean, towards the end, we had a great interest in people wanting to participate. So initially, I think we thought there might be, or I thought there might be maybe fifty people and I thought that was very optimistic. And also because, you know, this is the first year, wanting to make sure that we were safe and just kind of, you know, working through any kinks in the first year. I kind of didn't feel like we should be promoting it too widely, given that we hadn't done it before. But I think, I don't know, I think some people think there were three hundred people, others think there were like a hundred and fifty. It felt like a, a lot of people. It was amazing. A lot of bright lights and a lot of smiling faces. That being said, there are definitely next year, some things that I think we all agreed we could do to better you know, make this fun and still very safe. So one of the things we talked about is having a little more lighting in the preparation area where people arrive so we can help people to put the lights on the bikes because it got dark very quickly and you're trying to figure out which side of the battery goes into these lights, et cetera. Also a way to communicate to the crowd. I mean, I thought I would be sharing with twenty to fifty people, you know, directions, but having that many people, I think having some way of, you know, a P A system or something would be handy. Also the bike route, I like that it was just simple. There was just a slight little hill in one area. But the presence of cars on the street could definitely be a situation where we could have accidents. So I think we could request that any of the homes along the route, if they want to or like move their cars into the driveways or to someplace else so that somebody doesn't accidentally crash into a car, that would be good. Also there, of course, there's some little riders and then some that are, you know, faster. So maybe having, breaking it into two different groups, maybe one that's much slower for the littles with their parents walking alongside of them. And then one that is perhaps at a, maybe an hour later, that would be for people that, you know, are going at a different speed. I think it was kind of hard, you know, there was only, of course, the Carlton police, you know, they led the parade. So with their patrol car, they had their mountain bike behind that. There was a massive us with the bikes and then there was another Carlton police bicycle and then a golf cart and then another patrol car. I think going forward, yeah, I don't know. I think of the signup sheet. So we did have signup sheets. I think maybe having that a requirement, just so we do have an accurate count. And then also maybe even giving the riders a number. I mean, it would be fun for there to be, you know, some, a contest, for instance, and so a way to identify who these riders are so that maybe we could, people that want to be, participate in a competition like the most lights or most creative bike, we'd have a way to reach out to them after. Let's see what else. Also talked about maybe in the future as well, the opportunity for more vendors. I mean, it could be just, you know, roasted chestnuts. It could be a food truck or what have you. Again, wanting to keep it simple and then also having people go and dine at the restaurants in Carlton was kind of the thought this year. And then also signage, you know, to direct people where they need to be. And then Chief Martinez was also recommending that maybe we close off Pine Street right there at Main Street to keep any cars from driving around.
It was not, that was a pretty good rundown of the the ride. She animated. It exceeded everybody's expectations as she, she noted and people were having a lot of fun. They really enjoyed it. And the police did what they do best and did event management when it started getting bigger and making adjustments as needed to keep everybody safe during that time period. So we definitely, this is something that happened very organically and fairly quickly between council meetings. And so we wanted to work with them to keep it very fun. But we did recognize there are improvements we need to do next year. And we all agreed that about June of next year, we'll start having these conversations about what we need to do to put more safety plans in place and get this application in front of council in October or November.
Those things are aware.
Great. So normally don't they come before the event?
Normal.
And so we are, we have a process to follow normally, right, to make sure that we agree with the event. I heard positive things about it, but I'm wondering what we can do to not have that happen again so that we can make have visibility and make, and approve it, I guess, right? Especially when there's that kind of law.
What is the protocol then? If we couldn't approve it, obviously you approve it, right?
We work with the, the community to be able to have stuff, yeah, or work with them.
What is the, what is the issue? Like, is there any liability issue? If it's not proving this event unhappy?
We would, we always make sure that they were taking steps in place and when there were problems, we'd stay with them.
I think policy normally is for the council to the third level, you know.
Yeah, I'll just make the worst case scenario, like if something happened, we get an approval, right? So.
Does the event have, did they have an insurance rider?
They were working with Kenwright this time to have the insurance coverage, so it will not, it'll be covered in the future.
So as of last Sunday, if there would have been
what situation?
Issues, the city would be then hung out the grid or?
Yeah, I think they were following.
But they didn't have an insurance?
Well, they, they used, they used Ken.
Hi there, sorry about that.
That was my understanding. So yeah, it sounds like a great trip and it probably was a kind of a good job there. So Jane, thank you. And we look forward to seeing more of the organization for next year. And congratulations, it was a great job.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I lost my internet for some. Well, awesome.
Anyway, yeah, so we'll, we'll look for the information and the notifications next year.
Okay, you, take care.
Okay, next item. Mercury T M D L. Yes, I just want to give council an update for public input. For the Mercury T M D L, we have created a survey that is on our website to get some public input. It's a short five-question survey. As far as water treatment, P L C upgrade and following the approval of the integrator of record tech. This work will begin, this was approved through the budgetary process to the capital improvement fund. The other updates I wanted to give to council is that today we did submit the grant application to Yamhill County for additional ARPA funds. Those grant requests were for two projects that public works thought were of particular importance and significance. That is our headworks upgrade, we had a failure in our headworks screening. And so that does need to be replaced, that is part of our wastewater master plan. But due to this failure, it has risen in priority. Also, another project is the Grant Street pipe replacement project for collections at the, at the Clay Pipe, that's also part of our C I P and our wastewater master plan. And that has started to fail. And so we've raised that in priority as far as asking for current funding for those two projects. The other item I wanted to update council on is, I mentioned this earlier. I had a meeting today with Johnson Strategies about council retreats and about a different approach to that retreat, about bringing together our work plan as well as goals so that they all become part of that development of the work plan supports council goal achievement. And those goals support the master plans and comprehensive plan achievements that starts to become more of a whole circle. So we want to make sure that council fills out a responsive community request and serving as responsible stewards of the city. So we're hoping that the process will help with that and develop a framework and work plan within staff capacity and allowing for some of that wanting to be more responsive to some of these interim requests that don't have been on the council goal. Been some strategies, we'll be looking to set up individual calls with council like they did last year. The weeks of February 13th or December 20th over the next couple of weeks. So you can expect for this to. What would be updates I have, thank you. You got any questions? You guys have any questions?
When will the survey close?
It'll go till the end of the year. As Gordon noted, we need to get that draft improvement plan to be Q so that they have plenty of time to analyze it and provide feedback and tell us to make any changes that come back. So it'll initially close by the end of the year so we can submit that draft plan. But we can leave it open for continued feedback. About people know on our website, we put it in the tidbits and we did push it out in several, separate email pushups as well as we put it on Instagram. Keep reminding them. Oh, I was just gonna say when you do a jenson call, they call me after the 14. We call them beginning of their call. Okay, yes. If you have days or times that it's better for Jensen to get ahold of you, you let me know. I'll help coordinate that with your schedules. So just give me an email and I'll coordinate that. Okay, moving on, this is Vance. This is the section of the agenda that allows members of the public to go to the council on any items on or off the agenda. When invited, the mayor, the mayor, members of the, by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state your name and street address and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed. And we'll start with item A, items not on the agenda. Does anybody? Maybe no comment, very good. Okay, item B, items on the agenda. Is anybody up there having comments on the, on items on the agenda? I also see no hand phrases. Thank you. Moving right along to the consent agenda. There's the consent agenda with, I love to. And moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
With the change of the date on. Orders, resolutions, discretion, action items. Item A, city council welcomes the appointment. Where to cancel, as you well know, we have a vacancy on our council. We have had four applicants. We actually had five, one did not meet residency requirements that are not afforded to council. But we have four applicants. One of our applicants is not with us this evening. They had a medical issue and so they have provided me a statement to read. We do have, they do have up to three minutes to say why they want to be a city councillor. And one of their backgrounds is in the field for the position. If council wants to ask a question, following the applicant's statements, if, I think if we wanted to council to one, one council or one question per councillor. But then we would ask that question of each applicant so that everybody has a fair chance to address the question. And if we could probably reverse the order of when, or we could alternate the order in which people answer the questions. So now the first person answering the first question, would the first person always answering each question? But we alternated, that would kind of do the fairest process. So I have that one person from here, how's that fair? Bring on here. I mean, you know, I mean, they presented a statement that you're gonna read and. Okay. Okay, was she informed of the, when the procedure was going to be? Yes. And so she understood that that was. Yes. And then when we get to the voting, we will say candidate A and their name. And each councillor gets one vote per round. And we will keep track of how many votes each candidate gets. The lowest voting, the person receiving the lowest number of votes will be eliminated from the next round. We will do that with majority of votes, which is four votes. But we may get four votes in the first round or it may be tough to pick. I want to do that pretty quickly, I know I outlined it in your memo, but I want to do it pretty quickly. Are there any questions?
The only question I have is you said, if we had another additional question, you have to ask it to every.
Every candidate. So if you ask candidate A what their favorite color is, then we have to ask.
But that's an additional, it's not anything that gave it the premise.
We don't have to ask questions. You do not have to ask a question. You are not obligated to ask.
Questions are up there, everyone has said their statement.
I'm sorry?
The questions will be up there, everyone has spoken or given their statement.
Yes, after everybody's been given their statement. So if anything arises during the state, you have that. Um, let's see, we didn't really talk about order of making the statement, I'm going to go with the order that, and I think that when you put it in here, the order which the applications were. And it's okay, state order. So that means our first applicant is David Stenonhill. And you're up.
Hello councillors and mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to volunteer for this position. I am a third generation Oregonian. I lived, I moved out to the Carlton area in 1989. I went, I graduated from Yamhill Carlton Union High School. I thought that I would move along, join the Navy and see better places of the world and discovered that there, there isn't a better place in the world than Carlton. I'm applying to become a city councillor because I see that, that we have several opportunities for improvement. We have financial concerns in, in our city with, with the water bill. We have growth issues and growth concerns. And I want to be part of the team that helps provide the answers to how we resolve these issues. That's why I've applied for this position. Um, some, some, a couple of, I have a couple of assets that I think that would make me a valuable team member. One of them happens to be communication, I can communicate by electronically, through email, in person. I like taking the time to understand what others are trying to say or what you're trying to communicate. And I also strive to work with conflict resolution. I've also worked with, trying to help out get our, our last city hall passed. But I discovered with being involved with trying to pass it, get the last city hall up and running that our citizens feel extremely they're sensitive about money issues. And I discovered that some to their, to their concerns. So anyway, that's, that's why I'm applying for this position. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, with the Carolyn Thompson-Rizer. Okay, Carolyn's statement. Hello, everyone, my name is Carolyn Thompson-Rizer. I apologize for being unable to attend this meeting. I thank Shannon for reading my statement. In the spirit of open and accountable communication, I want to clarify my years of residence in Carlton answer on my application form where I wrote 14 years. My husband and I bought our home in Carlton, pressed the 2017. We moved to Carlton in 2007 and lived at the end of Park Street in the house on Western Look Farm, which I understand is in the county, but I felt very much like a citizen of Carlton. I really like living in Carlton, I like walking around town. I like the city parks, I like the people, I like our local businesses. I feel our small town atmosphere is very special and need continued nurturing as we grow to meet your demands of running a modern, safe town. I do envision a smart future for Carlton that includes a state-of-the-art public safety building. I believe that I have listening and communication skills that can help our city council continue on the path forward. I have a scientific background in geology which makes me ask questions and try to solve problems using fact, logic and consensus. In 2018, I attended community emergency response training. I think it is very important that the city of Carlton is prepared to help citizens during all times of disasters. Thank you. Okay, Noel, Maria, Maya. Sorry if you cannot see that individual card in the video. Okay, yeah, we should. Okay, that we've got your your application, so yes, I guess we move on to Kerry Rhodes.
Hello. I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name's Kerry Rhodes, I'm ready for city council. I've been on city council 14 years prior to now, of course. But I do have some input for you guys that I might be able to help you on, like on the city hall. I just watched you guys' work session there. I was part of that for many years, it's been going on for quite a while, as you all know. I've lived here, I've moved to Carlton in 1996, raised both my kids here. I love it here, I've watched it grow. From when I moved here downtown was pretty empty, you know, had slow growth and things have really moved on since then. I was part of youth groups and things like that. That was a lot of fun for me when I first moved here. And then I just wanted to get into something better and bigger. So I thought, well, I'll join, I'll do the city council. And then work it with the team there, the council members, come up with the, you know, try to come up with good ideas or with the citizens, you know, kind of help direct us to. And like the pool house, we did that, we fixed that and got that all together and the water lines and you know, all that. So anyways, I don't know why I'm so nervous right now, I always am, but anyways, that's why I'm running for city council. And I have, like I said, 14 years experience on the council, so hopefully that helps. That's it.
Does anybody have any questions for any of the folks that you? The two, the two of you made it there. You look for there were five applicants? Or? The two that aren't here are David and Kerry. Okay, no questions? Um, yeah. The question would be, um, that you have concerns, I know David, you already addressed that in your opening statement. But in the sense that you have concerns or things that you observe in the community, how would you as a councillor go about addressing that in working with the community, working with your fellow councillors to resolve those issues?
Do I go first? Okay, thank you. Um, so I would be working to communicate concerns from citizens. Hopefully I'd be able to bring you the citizen's name because I believe in open, openness and transparency. I don't like saying, well, this person over here says this. That, that seems, I've, I've seen a lot of that in communities where there's a, there's a lot of kind of like little hidden. I hate to call it games, but that's the way that I feel, you know. Being able to bring who has the, has the concern and clearly stating what the concern is. And then working with everybody as a team to resolve that concern or and or address that concern and getting back to the citizen. I believe that that's very important. So I, I think that pretty much sums up how I, how I feel that I would handle a, a citizen's concern. Just being, being open about it and communicating and making sure that the other city council members were aware of the concerns that, that I hear out in town.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
Me myself, I would definitely bring this concern to the council and talk about it and discuss it. And also I'd invite, invite the individual unless he was embarrassed to come in or whatever to talk to the council. But I would definitely invite him to. And also I'd invite, invite the individual unless he was embarrassed to come in or whatever to talk to the council, but I would definitely invite him to come in and talk to the council face to face so that we can really get true, you know, the answers, maybe even resolve some of the questions for him right then and there, so he feels comfortable. Him or her. Is that what your question was, surely?
Well, there's a second part of that. Part of that question actually for both of you was if there's any concern, you know, because some of those issues that might come up that, that they're concerns in the community, you know, overlap with what we as the council or staff are already engaged in. So it's, you know, working in consensus to be consistent with the council as well, you know, to you know, with the understanding that certain things, you know, are already in the works, so.
Got you. So you're saying that we could actually answer that question to, to the person, individual, since we're on the council is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, if there's like, well, there's been issues about, you know, water rates, sewer rates or whatever. I mean, a lot of that we as the council are already working on, you know, so it's sort of keeping the consensus with the council. Pretty much issues with me, you know, that we're already addressing. I mean, I'm making myself clear my point, but.
Would you be bringing, would you question back and also answering responding to the the, the concerns, citizens?
Okay, so um to answer the second part of the question is I would be in full support of working with city council to support the progress that they have already made. There's, I've seen a lot of great growth over, I would say the last two years, I've noticed that there's, there's been significant changes in Carlton. And I'm not coming in to, to upset anything. I'm coming in to support us moving forward. And being able to communicate with citizens also about what's going on because there does seem to be a, a lot of misunderstanding out there right now about what's going on with the water rate. Water rates, what's going on with fixing the roads, what's going on with fix, fixing the sidewalks? And you guys are, I know that there's already a lot of this in progress. So I would just want to be, the, what I would do is I would be putting out appropriate messaging about what you guys are doing, what you guys have done, and what you guys are planning on doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I'm reading your hand. For round one, I will go down the list as we heard from people. Please keep them up because I have to record your name. David Sam Hill. Thank you. Carolyn Rizer. Noel Amaya. And Kerry Rhodes.
Do you have a question? For each, each round about, we're only to vote for one person only.
That's correct.
That's correct. I think that until there was a majority, I think that's, that's a majority.
That just happened.
We just had a majority.
To finalize that, I think you need to make a motion to appoint Kerry Rhodes to the vacant position, council position and have a hold over on that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to appoint Kerry Rhodes to the city council.
On paper.
Can you report that? Was that all eyes?
Yes.
No?
I.
I'm a name.
One name.
All eyes. Thank you.
Kerry, you were emailed the oath of office.
Yes.
We have that in front of you.
Yes, I do.
It'd probably be easier to do if you just read it rather than us going back and forth.
You ready?
I believe we are ready.
I, Kerry Rhodes, the undersigned duly appointed city councillor for the city of Carlton. Do hereby solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and the states of Oregon and the Charter and Honors of the City of Carlton. And I will faithfully perform my duties as county, city councillor to the best of my ability.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, thank you very much for your application. We appreciate you taking the time and having the interest. And we appreciate.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much and congratulations to Kerry Rhodes.
Thank you, David.
Alrighty. Next one is the Carlton Business Association Christmas and Carlton Fanta Dash event. And Joylin, I believe you're here to talk to us.
Hi there. Where are you? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yes, I am presenting the Carlton Business Association. And we are doing a fundraiser, which is the Five K Santa Dash. We are also incorporating a kids' one mile, it's called a elves' run essentially for the kiddos. And we're gonna have, so it's, it's gonna be located at the Yamhill Carlton Soccer Arena. And in past years, I believe we started this in two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and seventeen. And we've always hosted it at the Carlton Fire District. And this year they didn't want to host it, so Karen, Karen Wright offered to host it at the soccer arena. So the elves' dash is gonna start at nine thirty. And then the five K, which is the Santa Dash, is gonna start at ten. So the route is, I, I gave it with the city, hopefully you have that. So essentially, and we're gonna have volunteers, like we've always had in the past, at certain points throughout the route to help people guide them along and there's only, there's two points where they cross forty-seven, but no streets are gonna be blocked in any way, it's just allowing runners to run through the street, so we'll have two volunteers, one on Seventh Street and one on Third Street, which is where they'll finish, so they'll go third and then they'll finish on Monroe Street. So it'll start and, and at the Yamhill Carlton Soccer Arena. We'll have donate, donate, sorry, donuts provided by Francho. She works with American National, she's on the Carlton Business Association Board. And we were gonna incorporate like a beer station provided by Crowing Hen, which is also a CBA member. That will be free to anyone twenty-one and over who is signed up for the race, so they'll receive a ticket and a wristband. And we'll have an OCC permitted person pouring for them. And then following this event, I know this is not on the agenda for me, but following the event Karen is gonna have free Santa photos for kids at the soccer arena as well. So Santa is gonna start the race and then he'll meander to the covered area for free photos with Santa. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, that was just like an on the application. Can you hear me?
I can.
Your application say anticipated attendance total sixty, is that based on prior experience or?
Yes, so in two thousand and nineteen, we essentially had twenty people sign up online, but we had about forty-nine people attend the race. So I'm thinking there might be more this year.
Okay.
Yep.
So just to give you that the motion.
I make a motion we approve the special event application around the Carlton Business Association, the use of the city streets and public parking area for the Santa Dash run and flat walk event on December eighteenth.
All in favor? Kerry?
Do I have to vote tonight?
Yes, yeah.
Aye, well, I had, there was, no, there were some said that I don't have to, I can say it.
Yeah, no, that's okay, yeah.
I would, I'll vote, yeah, aye, I'm in.
We just didn't want you to feel left out.
Okay. Good job, Joylin.
Thanks. Awesome, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They asked me, aye or not, so.
Alrighty, moving on to goal number one point three point two, municipal civic building discussion. This is followed up from the work session. Yes, and Kevin and Mark are still with us. There they are. Do you want to speak briefly to the analysis that you sent over?
Yep, thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to be here again this evening. So we, we presented the city of Carlton with a revised a fee for additional services. We still are working within the contract, the personal service agreement that was dated back in January of twenty twenty. Our revised or additional fees really are for the project to, to, to go back to the phase where essentially the last deliverable before we put the project on hold, which was a hundred percent DD, and our proposal is to do what we're, we're calling a design reconciliation to bring that phase back into current alignment with the project goals and and the goals of city council and city, and city of Carlton. With that revised deliverable, that creates a new project deliverable that we can go into what's called construction documents. The remainder of the project from that point on will be all new. And will be based on the, the design deliverable that we present at the end of this design reconciliation phase. And I have to apologize, I just lost connection to the server here on my side, so I'm not actually able to pull up my fees, but I do feel like I know them. Apologize, I can't, I can't reference the, the sheet that they're on. But our architectural services for the remaining portion of the project, if we go back to fifty percent DD to go back to a hundred percent, we're proposing for, for us, Hulse, that's a fifty thousand dollar additional services proposal. And in, I, I want to say it's page seven, exhibit A, you can see all of the other consultant proposals and fees associated with that. The total consultants' proposals is fifty-eight thousand for a total additional services of one hundred and eight thousand three ninety-nine. This will be, there, there is quite a bit of work to be done on the consultant side, which is why you see those those fees being substantial, primarily from structural, structural engineering, kind of has to not go all the way back to the beginning, but they will be redesigned as a substantial portion of, of what they did before. Part of that is, is proposing a two-story building. There are a lot of areas of the building that we can continue to, to utilize from a structural engineering standpoint. And similarly for civil and, and MEP, so mechanical and mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineering. There is a substantial amount of redesign efforts that they need to do as well. But to my previous point, there is there are a lot of assumptions still in place that remain from the previous proposal that we're able to utilize. So therefore, we're not, we're not proposing taking the project all the way back to the beginning of the schematic phase. What our proposal is now is to essentially restart the project back in the DD phase. And with, with the fee provided, be able to move forward with the additional services and our existing contractors in place to finalize the project to completion. Okay, I got it back. There we go. Okay, perfect, sorry, I just now got, got my, my PDF to work again. I apologize for that. Do you guys have a copy of the proposal there with you? You do, perfect, okay, great. What I wanted to kind of quickly point out was on page five, so page five is what I was just referencing. Exhibit A calls out essentially the project fee to close, and that includes the numbers from our previous, our previous personal service agreement. There are, there are numbers from our existing construction document phase, which on here is noted in CD that we are incorporating into this restart additional services. So there's a credit that was never billed when the project stopped. We are essentially crediting that back and including that in our, our proposal. So we're not redesigning the entire CD phase of that, we're actually crediting back what we had never built, just to clarify that. Exhibit B, which is gonna be page six, is gonna have the current project all the way to date, so that is back when the, when the project started in January of twenty twenty. You can see the fees associated with the specific phases of the project and the fees that were to complete the project. What you'll see is, is a total number and an estimated construction budget of five million. The good news is, is that actually our total A and E design fee is well within current standards, current architectural and engineering standards. In fact, we're on the lower side of that, ten point seven three percent, yes.
I'm sorry, we're missing exhibit B out of the package that you had sent. Can you share your degree?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay. All right, let me know if you can see this.
We might have it, it might just be mislabeled.
Yeah, we've got exhibit A. Yeah, that's what it says.
It looks like it's B.
Okay, so it looks like we do have it, it's labeled as B. And the boy, I'm writing B as a dot.
Yeah. This doesn't say B on it, that's okay. Don't worry about that. The point is, is what we wanted to get across tonight and, and let you guys mull this over is the total A and E design fee is within architectural standards, it's within normal wa- range, and as noted previously, this ten point seven three percent is actually And as noted previously, this ten point seven three percent is actually under what is typically provided for a city hall and police station. We've, the good news is, we're not coming up with these in a bubble. We have, there are a number of surveys and analyses that we can look to to provide, you know, a fee range that is adequate and within range of what the services that we're providing here are. We use, primarily, we use the Office of Financial Management from the State of Washington guidelines for all public projects that they have, they have guidelines set in place. Now, we know that that it's not an Oregon standard, but it is for the State of Washington, and so it's a really helpful tool for us. One of the, one of the things for that is there are some scopes that we are providing on this project that are not standard under that Office of Financial Management guideline. However, we are still well within that range when, when we look at those reports. Additionally, we have a twenty seventeen AIA review fee or review of architectural fees, and we are actually below the current standard for medium quality in these types of buildings for a city hall and police station. So what we want to say is not that, hey, you're getting such a great deal. It's that we're, what we're trying to do is we want to finish this project because we really believe in it. And what we're providing here is our services to move forward are really the bare minimum. So in order for us to keep moving and to keep working, this really, this really just covers our overhead and what it costs for our employees to work on this project. We do make a very minor profit, but it is minor. And the reason that we're providing this proposal is because, again, we believe in it. We want this project to be successful, we want the city to love it. We've been through a number of rounds of revisions to this project with, with the city and with council and all the way back to George Fox University. And so we, we're invested in it from a, you know, a personal perspective, but as well, we just really believe in this project and hope that it's something that can be beneficial to the city for the next thirty years and beyond. So I think that's probably all I need to share from the fee proposal. I'll let you guys look through it in greater detail if you so please. What we're hoping for tonight, what we wanted to provide along with the space needs plan is really what it looked like to move forward if the decision was to start today. The very end of the proposal, I did provide, I'm just going to go to that page, I did provide a proposed schedule. And this would be under the expectation that if council decided to move today and we wanted to start work on this tomorrow, this is what the schedule could look like. We understand that you guys might want to take some time to make this decision, which is completely fine. We also have, you know, ways to accommodate that. But as we're looking in the future, towards our future staffing and how, what a realistic timeline this could look like to get the project finished, this is sort of a proposed estimate. And what we also use to, to really gauge our staffing needs for this project.
Can I ask a quick question? You know, Mike, the community engagement, have that been done or will that be done? Probably dumb question, sorry. No.
No, it's not, it's not a dumb question at all. In fact, yeah, so we worked with Luke Zimmerman and the City, George Fox University early on to work on community engagement. We were involved in a, I want to say there was a thing, there was one open house in the previous design efforts, previous design phase. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing the screen, sorry about that. There was one open house that we offered in the previous design phase when there is a different city council involved and a different city manager. We fully support, you know, community engagement and, and, and open communication within the residents of the city. So we, we have a fee that we still have for that that has not been billed, so that's very much an opportunity still to be taken.
Are there any other questions?
Hi, Wes, just as a discussion, how do we, since we are not having bids for this project and we are going along with that, is there a way for us to see comparables or have some outside source to tell us this fee is reasonable? We are just going along. I know it's more cost effective than time effective to go with that, but. Leave with this because.
Please correct me if I'm mistaken about history, but the procurement process for this one to the RFP process to maintain an architectural firm at that point in time. And so that was the comparison of the population process that was completed. And so this is part of the engagement of their contract. Created in twenty nineteen. Yeah. Yeah. At this point, so this is just.
The procurement process for professional architectural services by statute is not allowed to be done based on solely on cost. And so you have to look to different qualifications and you rank those qualifications, you go through a ranking process and you select your professional and then you negotiate a price, which is what happened in two thousand and nineteen. Holtz was the, was the firm that succeeded in convincing the council that they were the right firm for the job. And then the price was negotiated between Holtz and staff and brought back to the council and reviewed and approved at that time. So this is an amendment, essentially, they're asking for an amendment for that agreement to, to restart the project basically and, and go back and change the elements that the council wants changed under the current, especially that having. The only, the only comment I would make is that an amendment to the council needs to be in a form that is, that we have approved. I haven't seen such a form come through yet, but you can certainly approve it, approve it in concept, the amount if you choose to do so, or you can request that staff go back and get a, and, and determine through discussions with other architects whether the proposed fee is a percentage of anticipated construction is a reasonable fee to be paid by the city for those design and, and construction related services.
When we put this project on hold in two thousand and twenty, we did it with the understanding that we would be coming back to HULST. The reason we put it on hold was, was basically because of COVID and we didn't know what the finances were going to look like in another year and what we were looking at financially. It had nothing to do at that time actually with, that was, that was the motion and that was why we put, put the project on hold was because we were concerned about where we would be financially. With the understanding that we would revisit it in a year and if the finances looked financially, we looked solid that we would start, start back up. But we never really broke any contract, it was more a matter of just putting a little bit of a delay on until we knew it.
The contract was paused.
Was paused. Thank you.
So we essentially decided already, I'm here to just, you're not proving anything else and we're just going along with what they're showing us. See if we approve her.
You can, you can approve or disapprove the change in the contract amount. Yes, that is subject, that is what they're requesting that you approve. And if you wish that too, staff can inquire with other professionals as to whether that's a reasonable change.
So do we have a contract like that in the first one, twelve nineteen, like exhibit B that we have, do we have something like?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, sure.
Can we see that as well so we can compare it then? I guess my question is what has changed on the two thousand and nineteen contract? How are we just?
That's a question for the architect, not for me.
Yeah, sorry, I was just looking there and helping.
Yeah. Is that a question for me?
Yeah, or are there changes now from the contract we have in two thousand and nineteen to this one?
Yeah, thanks for the question. When you're looking at the proposal that you have in front of you, page two will show you the total dollar value that actually encapsulates the, the total change in contract between the previous phase to now. There is, there is a contract management fee included on there of two thousand, a little over two thousand dollars. That is in addition, so all of this would be in addition to the contract that was agreed to back in two thousand and twenty, or signed back in January of two thousand and twenty. We have all of the scope, which would be all of the work that needs to be done, included in this proposal, both from architectural side as well as the engineering side.
And just to clar, just to clarify a little bit more, the reasoning for the change in fee, which is on our side fifty thousand and consultants fifty eights for a total of a hundred and eight in addition to the previous contract, is because the building has gotten bigger. So the construction costs have gone up from three and a half to five million. And we're going backwards in time to redo a bunch of work. So that's what the, that's why the, the request for the change in fee amount. And I think with your, if, when you do get to analyze the previous compared to now, our, our percentage of construction costs before would be higher than it is now. So, you know, we're below the percentage of construction that we were in two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty.
Mike, a follow-up, can you help me with in addition to, when you said the previous contract? Is this number that's the in addition to?
Right.
I understand, there's another number out here that I don't know, that I don't see.
Yes. Yeah, so in, I'm referencing the two thousand and twenty PSA, which is the personal service agreement currently in place. That number is, and I can pull that up real quick, was four hundred and twenty-five thousand and thirty dollars. So that is the previous contract that is in place, and our proposal is to increase that by a set amount.
And so this, the restart column, obviously, I understand from the consultant perspective, you're restarting the civils and the mechanicals, all those engineering. That's just because of the scope of work has changed to that's that additional.
Exactly. Yep, no, you're correct.
Yeah, I'm kind of a little confused with the, it's exhibit B and A. Are we saying that A is what we have to do now, the amount of three hundred and twenty-one thousand? And exhibit B has the total for things that you have done already?
Exhibit A is a project that will be remaining. So essentially on top of our restart fee that you're approving today, the remaining budget of this project will be three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Exhibit B shows the total amount, including where the project paused at to date, with the fee remaining for a total budget of five hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and fifty with the project at five million dollars. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
My question is, in two thousand and nineteen, did we have the full scope? Like, do we have schedule B already in two thousand and nineteen or not? Or we just had the first two columns essentially?
No, you had, you had the whole fee. You had all, you had all of the common columns included, schematic design called SD, DD, CD, permitting, and CA are included in that. And I can, I can share my screen if you guys need, but the, the total for that was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and thirty dollars. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Exhibit B is the increase because of the increased square footage from the original thought.
Correct. Yeah.
Or was this part footage of the original design? What was this part footage of the original?
Correct.
Okay. Who do we want to do your votes?
I understand that these are, these are just estimates, and I apologize for the many questions, but I'm struggling with like landscape architect, for example, it almost doubles. Is that just because of the times we're in right now? The estimate from exhibit A, I mean, if our building got bigger, the landscape actually went, got less? Simple hanging it, I guess. I'm not trying to nitpick, I just, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I, so maybe in an effort of oversharing information here, it might be confusing. Exhibit B, again, is, 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 is the project to date, it includes everything that was previously done. It shows the total all-in cost for architecture and engineering fees. Exhibit, exhibit A just shows the remaining. So really, the overall difference, all it's costing, let's say, for example, landscape, the only change in landscape is an additional two thousand and five hundred dollars.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
So that works the same way with, you have your lighting designer, five hundred, five hundred in exhibit A, and then in B, you go to twenty-eight hundred dollars.
So what you're seeing in exhibit A should, should not have any numbers included in the SDD, SD and DD phase, correct?
The, the column that we're really looking at is the one that shaded beige, that's the one that's in, in exhibit A, that's the one that we're, we're looking at that we are working on, the restart, the restart, yes.
I do it for all comparing apples to oranges, or I feel that I would like to see two thousand and nineteen numbers here instead of what we've seen exhibit A.
Yeah, so they're included in here. These, these numbers are all, everything you see here that's not in this middle column is all the same numbers from two thousand and nineteen that we agreed to. This is the only change that you would be approving, is this middle column.
What did it change it from? Is that from the stuff from exhibit B? That was the prior one?
I'm looking at the B estimate, where you have that five hundred and then it goes to twenty-eight hundred. Why?
Oh, the far right column? That is, that is a total. There's a total for each one. So if you, you follow the line across structural engineering, they have a fee for each one of these phases. And when you get to the end, that is the total fee estimate for that particular consultant. Does that make sense?
I think, Mark, there's, what I'm hearing is there might still be some confusion surrounding the calculations from exhibit A to exhibit B. And for example, the lighting designer, I think, is what Councillor Erickson called out, was five hundred dollars on exhibit A as far as fee estimate, and then the fee estimate of the fee is twenty-eight hundred. And I think similarly, Councillor Brandao is asking what results in the change in exhibit B for the fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah, I can absolutely explain that. So exhibit A again is fee remaining. So that twenty-eight hundred dollars, the consultant, that particular consultant has already billed a lot of their fees. So they have five hundred dollars and that's included in the ASR, remaining to close out their project. Now, I will, I will note, we only got one all-inclusive restart ASR fee from our uh mechanical engineering, uh electrical, low voltage and lighting. You can see they're all the same company, interface engineering. We do not have a way to break that down. So you can see that they all say included with mechanical. Does that make sense?
Sorry. So to clarify, the restart AS and AS and R, this is a column that wouldn't exist if we had continued the project in two thousand nineteen.
Correct, exactly.
If you, if you had stated ninety-six hundred square feet.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what we're bringing extra. It's just that call.
Yeah.
Right.
I will also note that we are required to go back through uh planning commission because we did uh submit a um a land use application to go uh before uh a planning commission hearing, and we paused prior to that hearing uh occurring. So we would be required to resubmit um land use again, and that is included in the fee.
Not to make things more confusing, but I think what, what's trying to be shown here is the, there's essentially an exhibit that shows from today going forward and what that total fee would be, which is this three twenty-one. And the other one is going back and saying from the very beginning, this is what the total fee is. But we've already billed the first column of SD and the first column of DD. We build that, we did that work, we build that work, we got paid for that, both of those phases. And so Mark was simply trying to show you a comparison between, this is what the whole fee is, because that's really if you're going to go out and try to understand, is our percentage for the entire project in line with what might be market rate or or, you know, other standards. That's what you're going to compare it to. So that's what the other exhibit with all of the numbers is and the percentages for that. And this is essentially from here going forward, this exhibit that's on the screen now is what that's, what's, what that's capturing. The green is simply, or the beige is simply the one that is in addition. We already have a contract in place for the white, the white sections, the white, the white column, CD permitting, CA. We have a contract in place for that. We're looking to amend that to add the green or beige column, the um restart ASR.
Yeah, I'm. It did, for me, the restart, it seems like it almost cost as much as the, the prior things we did before.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, well, it, it does minus the, it, that, it, it's minus the first two phases. So what we did before, yeah, SD and DD are a certain percentage of an overall contract typically, because there's a certain amount of work to be done in those. And so those are two big chunks of the overall fee. Um, the restart ASR is, you're right, fifty thousand dollars. We're going back and doing a fair amount of the work, but we're also adding one point five million dollars of budget and three thousand square feet. So there's a fair amount of redoing of the work that we've done and getting it back in line.
You mentioned that. The cost has changed.
Yeah.
They have.
Okay. Where are we?
Well, I guess my first question would be hearing the staffing analysis and looking at estimated target total square footage. Is counsel comfortable moving forward with a building of twelve thousand seven hundred square feet, given the, the analysis?
We have money, you're talking about that, huh?
So that's, that's the challenge is until we have a plan, it is very difficult to put a funding package to go to, it's hard going out to seek federal, state funds and grants. Because I, to go and to feed grants, I have to know, I have to give a description of what the grant's going to.
Kind of your, what your plan and go out and try to find money to go up there for them.
Right, so that we can minimize or eliminate any debt to the citizens. Minimize or eliminate.
I, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I will comment, kind of going with what you were talking about in search of grants, um, today at a meeting with one of the people that was there was Betsy Emery, who is um Senator Merkle's field here. Who was asking me where we were on this particular project because she has a line on some federal money that might be available to help with this project. And once we made the vote or made the decision here, uh, we needed to get back with her. I was going to tell you that earlier, but it's better to stay now.
The fifteen to understand the knowledge.
So, yeah, that, there, there's money out there that, but they're not going to commission anything or tell us anything until they know that we're that we've committed. And so the timeline of what was given here
was that for sake of argument, that you gave a notice to proceed for polls to continue with the design with the square footage of twelve thousand seven hundred. They would go back and start working on flow, and please correct me, stop me if I'm talking for you incorrectly. They would start looking at flow of the rooms um in the hall and figuring out how to place everything so that it flowed well. And they would start working on exterior. They would start incorporating the designs that came in from the survey. And then we have a potential for a January eighth work session for council to sit down for two to three hours to look at the flow that's been created and the rooms that have been created and the exterior and get, you know, play around with it, get comfortable with it and maybe offer a few tweaks. But with that, we could potentially have a final design by the end of January, which should fit into the federal appropriations timeline of, we would have a plan, a design plan, would not be a construction yet. We couldn't go up to bid yet. But we'd actually have a design plan that I could take and at least illustrate to federal representatives, state representatives, grant agencies, um, private donors and start that process. We'd start building that financial component. Did I state anything incorrectly, Mark?
No, that was great. Thank you.
That would be, that's a big deal, though, yeah. Well, that would, um, when Rick, Rick Hankis was at our last meeting and was talking about how to be fundraising, that would be another.
I've been putting the feelers, I've been putting the feelers out there, but everybody says, where's the plan? And so I'm sort of at this crossroads of I can go out to traditional financing and continue to tell you what the interest rates are looking like. But until we have a plan, I can't even tell you when those will be locked in.
And what tonight, we just need to decide or come to something about square footage and to say, yay or nay?
Um, square footage, give a notice to proceed, say yes, please proceed. I would like to settle on the January eighth work session because that's when the majority of people said they were available at a time, so I can get that planned. Yes.
Well, I think that.
Prove the cost.
I think scheme two is um the appropriate way to move forward. I don't think it needs to be any bigger than the twelve thou. I mean, that, that gives us that, that very lofty thirty-year goal. I think that's appropriate to stay.
They've got a thing of twelve thousand and a few square feet. Oh.
That's just my opinion. I think that scheme fits with the city.
We have that thirty-year estimate and it matches with that. And I think I'm comfortable staying within that, not the way another thousand square feet.
I would actually run for error. We need to check count. It, it could be wrong. We could need more people. We could need more staff. I, I mean, growing Oregon is growing a lot, like it's for our performance, we're growing housing, we're getting development every year, year. So I, I think we need to run for error. I think we need more.
I, I, I get what you're saying. Uh, I just feel like going from what we're at right now to twelve thousand square feet is pretty significant. I mean, obviously significant from seventeen hundred, three thousand, so four thousand. I mean, we're tripling the size.
But in there.
And I mean, and I, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there's going to, when we have this work session and stuff, there's going to be some room to maybe adjust a few things, you know, so twelve thousand seven hundred is not like the, you know, the nail on the coffin. It's kind of one of the, just the.
Starting point.
Well, I would, I would add to that, just, I mean, I, I, I'm really uncomfortable having the twelve thousand seven hundred. But the, the higher amount of square footage you anticipate, most of that would be the community room area, and that's probably one area of the new building that we have the best opportunity of grant dollars for funding from other sources. Or apartment, community grant, you know.
And we're not worrying on the sizes of, of the community or the community room or the public safety right now.
I'm sorry, what?
We are not worrying on the sizes of everything in the field.
Oh, no, but that higher square footage amount anticipated a larger community grant. Did I get that right?
It also anticipated a higher public safety because it has to grow equally. So we, i- if the square foot increases, the public safety portion is going to have to increase also. And I feel like I heard the consensus of that's big enough.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think through the design, making that community room as big as possible with having office. I mean, again, I think jumping a little bit ahead, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I guess. We are, like, I don't, I, we're not discussing how much you're going to have a public safety or community room right now. Right? We're just discussing the total. You're not necessarily saying we're going to have four thousand square feet of public safety, but.
What? I, I could be wrong, but that's what I heard is as if we increase to the thirteen thousand square foot level, public safety has to get
Would get bigger.
Bigger off.
So where do we go? Do we vote on that for the side or, or the A or G?
Well, would you be comfortable on square footage?
I think you should have a motion.
Motion for square footage?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion for square footage?
I'm making a motion to uh have a total square footage of approximately twelve thousand seven hundred square feet.
All in favor? All right.
Carry a standing or is he voting?
Aye.
Aye. Good night. Aye. Okay. Motion to proceed and conceptually authorize the cost required to do that.
Maybe, maybe I could help bring that a little bit.
Thank, thank you.
Probably the motion would be to approve an amendment or approve and authorize the mayor and the city recorder to sign an amendment to the engineering services contract, which incorporates the proposed additional fees discussed this evening, subject to review and approval by the city attorney as form and format.
Okay, can I?
So do we?
Okay, all in favor?
Well, somebody has to, oh, wait a minute.
We need a motion or a?
That was the motion. Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any names? Any names?
Okay, and the last one, January eighth work session. Mark, you can, are you still available, January eighth? Please tell me yes.
For sure. In, in person, in person ideally.
In person. Um, January eighth is a Saturday. It was requested two to three hours. I said we just budget for three. We're done in two. We're done in two. Um, proposal so that you have, I'm just going to throw something out there to start the conversation so that you have a sense of your day and that I don't have to get up with the crack of dawn, nine AM. Nine to twelve. Yes, 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 yes. Sorry. Councillor Rhodes will nine to twelve, January eighth, work for you.
That'll work for me.
Nine to twelve. Here. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We look forward to continue working with y'all.
We'll see you January the eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, there's just time like that. All right. Next on the agenda is grant agreement approval and authorization. We have two grants we have been awarded. One is for, from BLTB for thirty-three thousand dollars uh that will cover specific housing components related to the comprehensive plan update and development for that phase. So it's not a general, we can just the first thirty-three spend it on that specific component. Um, we're working with the contractor to make sure where, where, when those components can be built. They're very rare in this brand. Uh, the second one is one hundred thousand dollars for improvements on West Main Street. And so the small cities allotment program through ODOT. So this allows for the American time to grant. And what is, is that from Main to like Cunningham or Main or it's from?
Forty-seven to Cunningham.
Yeah, 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 forty-seven. Including the little Main Street.
Well, that is Main Street. I thought they're going to fix.
I'll have a forty-seven. Right.
Twenty-fourty-seven. Two.
Sorry. Main Street improvement. What if ours again? Yeah, I should do it separately, just to keep it clean. Um, I'm the city council of offer condition twenty twenty-one dash three, being accepting and authorized with grant number five two seven one between the city and ODOT for this West Main Street improvement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
I make a motion, the city council of offer resolution twenty twenty-one dash three nineteen, accepting and authorizing the execution of grant agreement number eight eight dash twenty-three dash one nine four between the city and DLCT for purpose of updating portions of the city's development code and comprehensive plan.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. Close extension. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on your agenda is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one seven thirty-six for small wireless facilities. You had the first reading last month and it was passed, but it's the second reading, second reading by title only. Yeah, by title.
Hopefully, the motion will say that.
Okay, the new motion. Our business council authorized second reading of one number twenty twenty-one dash seven twenty-six by title.
Second.
Hey. I have a minute. Five seconds, paragraph all in, that's what I need to move that. Um, following, once you're done. Um, following, once you're done, I'll move on now. Oh, all right. Okay, and this is, do we read a resolution?
Yeah, you, you have a motion in a second to read the, the ordinance.
We need to do that. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash seven three six, an ordinance establishing standards for small wireless facilities. In the right of way in the city of Carlton, Oregon.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty one dash seven three six after.
Roll call vote. All right, Mayor Linda Watkins? Aye.
Council President Shirley Ward-Malley. Councilor Kevin Skipper.
Aye.
Councilor Jeremy Brando.
Aye.
Councilor Grant Erickson.
Aye.
Councilor Jeanne Eaton. Councilor Mary Rhodes.
Aye.
Okay. Turn down to ordinance number item F, ordinance number twenty twenty one seven three four, planning commission. Thank you, Mayor, this was first presented to council and council asked the planning commission to take a look at this ordinance. In front of you is a clean copy of the amendment to the ordinance, following comments from the planning commission. There was one error that was noticed in the publication, that is on paragraph B, page one fifty two of your packet. And rather than under qualification, the mayor shall strive, given the circumstances, after commission feedback, the city council shall strive to appoint members. Um, there was a question about paragraph J, as ex officio members also being appointed by the mayor, and I don't know if the attorney go.
Yes, uh, there was a question raised, uh, the appointment of an ex officio non-voting member of the commission does not to be, does not. Have to be undertaken in the same manner as the voting members of the commission, ex officio. Members are there to basically be liaisons, in this case, that provision relates to the appointment of a youth. Member on the commission, and the current draft proposes that that would be an appointment made by the mayor. As I recall.
Yes.
The, the, the other appointments to the council under the current ordinance would be. Uh, made by the city council. Uh, but only from persons who have applied. That was a change that was incorporated by the planning commission. Uh, so not simply at large, but from applications received by the city after going through an application. Process. I'm getting chanting tonight for my associate Nicholas, who have a baby at two in the morning. So, um, I apologize. That, uh. You know, they're in, they're in that special unit of the. Of the hospital for three month preemie babies, so.
Wow.
So they're, but if you want, I could, I could summarize for you the general changes that are, that are proposed, if that would be helpful to start your discussion.
Anything? I, I will make one comment, I, um, given the resistance to that meeting, yeah. I think the, uh, my own personal opinion is that. My commission was very thorough. Uh, they spent a lot of time discussing and they read through and they looked at things pretty carefully and had long discussion with Nicholas. As they were going through this. I'm pretty comfortable with what they proposed to us here. And, uh. We encourage you to. Support their decision. I agree with you on that, I also read, but, um, it was a quick, makes lots of sense. They're very thorough.
The ex officio members, she does something to do with the council as well?
I think that's something that we need to discuss, I'm not sure it's a good time to do it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to discuss them, this, this may be a possibility.
Yeah. Yeah. We have a motion to approve this, um, ordinance. The motion would be to authorize the first reading of the ordinance by title. Yes, sorry, your, your city manager forgot to stop you. I'm just trying to correct that now. You wanna authorize the first reading of the, of, of, not by title.
Is that with the correction that you noted earlier?
That's correct. Is there a motion to review?
I move that, uh, we operate as, uh, reading of ordinance number twenty twenty one dash three. Many Carlton municipal codes. Chapter two point two, relating to the planning commission.
There's no seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash seven three four, an ordinance amending Carlton municipal code chapter two point one two. Relating to administration of the planning commission.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? Now we have.
First reading.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty one dash seven three four.
Um, do we need a roll call vote?
Don't give you a second first. Now.
Now we get a roll call.
Mayor Linda Watkins?
Aye.
Council President Shirley Ward-Malley. Councilor Kevin Skipper.
Aye.
Councilor Jeremy Brando.
Aye.
Councilor Grant Erickson.
Aye.
Councilor Jeanne Eaton. Councilor Mary Rhodes.
Aye.
Thank you, that brings us to the final item on the agenda, customers helping customers. Um, city council expressed interest in developing programs for utility pubs to help utility customers needing financial assistance through utility bills. Um, this is a program based off of a McMinnville model. Um, that we modified to make sure that didn't create significant administrative responsibility on staff. But also provided a resource for our citizens. And that resolution is in front of you, along with the application of guideline. To the one time customer. In a shut off status.
And this is money. From customers can overpay their bill to have money transferred to an account. To use to help. Where is it, or in a one time status cutoff? And no, either the staff time, but no burden on the city or my name.
No, we would create a separate, uh, general ledger line. Uh, that would house this money, so say if you came in and said, I wanna donate a hundred dollars to this program. A hundred dollars would go into that line item, and if somebody then stated they needed assistance. We would then take their application, match it against the criteria, and then provide assistance if they qualify. Will you advertise it just on our website? We'll advertise it on the website, we can put out an email push, we can put it out in tidbits.
I have one question, one time per customer per account, is that like a year, or is that like a, for everything?
One time for everything. There are other county programs that are all already funded and functioning. That provide additional resources for those who need assistance more than one time.
Is, uh, from a city's perspective, is there quite a bit of need for this? Like, I, I just, I guess I'm imagining like the, is there gonna be a pool of money that sits there for a long period of time, depending on how much. It's been needed?
Put in the bag. There is a need, is what you're saying.
Yeah, how many, how many tanks go out of those?
Oregon, would you, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so we do have a, a list of people every month, I'd say on average. Um, the disconnections, depending on time of year, there are obviously, tax year were disconnections are more, um. Prominent than others, um, but I'd say on average between. Three to ten people a month that have services disconnected, um.
A month.
A month, yeah, and I mean, a little bit of that is people who are habitual, um, which I believe is the reason between allowing a one time usage. Um, so it's not to enable people to. Depend on that, um, rather than exploring other options for providing for their utility payments, um. But there's definitely a need for it, uh, and during the holiday season, uh, there is an increase in people's work level.
Look at there, is there a max amount, or would it just be like one month ago or something like that?
It would be the past due amount, so enough to get them, so the way the process is currently embedded, in order to avoid having services disconnected. People have a certain date that they must pay at least the past due amount, right? Um, so usually when they get their shut off statements, they'll have a previous amount due plus the amount that would be currently due on the fifteenth. Um, so as long as they pay the amount that's not due in the preceding fifteenth, then they would avoid having any of this action. Um, but then one way would be the rollover of people who are pennants, consistently crushing a month five. Thank you.
I need a motion. Very much.
So at this time, has there been? People that donated already, or?
We have had so far this season, one person who's come in and they had a customer in mind. Um, but last year we did have several people who came in and said, I'd like to give a hundred dollars, I'd like to give five hundred dollars to the city just as they keep it. Um, so having a program in place will kind of help to eliminate any sort of perceived bias or, um.
Right criteria.
Yeah.
Do we have, uh, um, do we have any options if that fund gets to, I like was mentioning? If, if it's unused, what will be done with that money, just gonna sit there for unlimited amount of time?
Um. I don't think with what we're gonna say, that we're going to see that problem, if we do start to see that problem, we can address it as. As it's coming forward, it would be a great problem to have, that nobody's needing that fund. That's agreement, yeah, yeah.
Like, I would like to have the fund that would help to, to pay for, don't help everyone with their bills, not only the people that are running. Or, um, can pay their bills, but I assume that's be something more difficult to do. Um. But I think that would be, um, something that'll offset the total amount of the deal and stuff. That the people signing on, because we hear complaints all the time, water, water is expensive. I think if we could set up something that could offset that cost, that would be great.
We've talked about that before, and I think at some point. You know, we can keep looking for it.
Right, that's the work session.
Yeah.
Thing, but that tonight is do we or don't we want this program?
It's just, it's such a small mandate, it's gonna help someone once, and the next thing they have is a problem, yeah. Their water's gonna be shot off, so.
Well, there do have, there are two programs, I think, within the county. At least that, especially if it's the first time cut off, um, they, they would, I'm assuming, also get the information for the county. Resources that are out there, so it, it would, uh. It would be a banning, but if they had to do it again, they would know where to go to get. But there's.
Other programs. Senior citizens. Today, if it's utility bills. Oregon, can you speak to that?
I'm not sure specifically anything, uh, geared towards senior citizens specifically, but I do know that there's quite a lot of people, um. Most, most places have an application process, um, with that certain criteria, and I'm not positive, to be honest, if there is over the requirement. Or, um, a preference given to people who are on fixed income or not. Um, I know McMinnville Water and Light has a program that they use. Um, where they do kind of include people that are on fixed income, or people who have suffered job loss or, um, illness, so. Um, but specifically towards people on fixed income, I'm not aware.
I agree with what Councilor Brando is saying, and I think would be worth investigating, and maybe like Shannon said. If we do find this significant amount of dollars or something, like we need to do something that we can revisit it, but. I also feel like it is appropriate to have. This in place, so there is no perceived bias for, for those donations coming in. I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution twenty twenty one dash three twenty, adopting a utility assistance program policy.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass it. Does anyone have anything, K, one, Merry Christmas? Okay, Happy New Year, because next time we meet again, we're gonna have to, it is January, January first, no, I'm kidding. It is January fourth. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second. All in favor?